At this time, I will call our open session to order and I would ask that you all join me in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance with our student board member, Mr. Little.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all and please be seated. At this time, before I call for a consent agenda motion, I would like to introduce our interim superintendent, who is just returning back to Ava, Dr. Jason Dial.
Lots of faces I know, lots of faces I've started to learn over the last week. Obviously, I've been on the jobs since Monday. I'm thrilled to be here. As I wrote a letter to the staff, my family and I have had many, many conversations over the past 10 years about the time we spent in Ava, the six years that we spent in Ava, and our fond memories of that. So, I'm thrilled to be here. My wife and youngest daughter, I have a daughter in college with my youngest daughter, is a junior in high school, so they are currently still in Baller, but they're coming tomorrow night to a football game. So, I'm thrilled to be here. Again, like I said, I know lots of faces. I see one that was probably my mentor as a principal. She was a teacher for me, but probably taught me more about being a principal than anybody I've ever been around. So, you guys mean a lot to me and I'm thrilled to be here. So, thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, a single motion, to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of the September 2016 regular open session, the October 14th special session, the approval of the financial fund summary fund balances, the authorization for payment of bills, and the incoming late bills. And also, the approval of this proposed agenda. In the expenses, we have early bills, $269,282.43. The late incoming bills, $89,094.85. We're going to pull from that $327.55, which leaves a total of $358,049.73. The reason of the deductions, Lowell Strong, $84.05 for conference expense, Marcia Aborn, $73.50 for conference expense, and Jeffrey Ellison? I haven't seen that before. $170 for volleyball official. So, with that, do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Wallace, signed by Mr. Treadway, all in favor, carried 7-0. Next, we will vote on Mr. Strong, $84.05, by Mr. Wallace, signed by Mrs. Aborn, all in favor, carried 6-0 with one abstention, Mr. Strong. Next is Marcia Aborn, $73.50, by Mr. Wallace, signed by Mr. Strong, all in favor, carried 6-0 with one abstention, Mrs. Aborn. Next is Jeffrey Ellison, $170, by Mr. Wallace, signed by Mr. Treadway, all in favor, carried 6-0 with one abstention, Mr. Ellison. All right, next on the agenda is recognition of visitors, which we're always happy to have visitors in our open sessions. And then, we have communications, Mr. Henry. MSBA Monthly Board Report, I should say.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the MSBA Board Report for the month of October. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We're coming to you this month from the 2016 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. More than 1,200 school board members and administrators from school districts throughout the state attended the event again this year. The conference featured more than 130 breakout sessions on a wide variety of topics and some outstanding keynote speakers, including Dr. Karen Mapp at the Harvard Graduate School of Education and one of the nation's top experts on family engagement with school. She said it's critical that families, educators, and communities work together for the benefit of all students.
You have to have relationships of trust and respect between yourself and your family, between your boards and your family. Home business, talking to families, doing events in the community, doing family work, getting to know your parents, letting them know you really value them. No relationship, no partnership.
Mapp said educators must have much more training if they are to integrate family engagement into their teaching. Another highlight of the annual conference was a presentation by Missouri's 2016 Teacher of the Year, Darby Valenti of the Savannah School District. She told an audience of school board members and administrators, "School shaped her life and inspired her to become a teacher."
You and I have very different roles. I'm a classroom teacher and you're either a school board member or superintendent more than likely. However, our mission is similar. We all strive to make a difference in the lives of children. You have a role in every child's life through the teachers that you support. Although teachers may have the impact daily, it is your impact on teachers' success that directly affects our students. You make a difference, just like the teachers you support make a difference. I applaud you for dedicating your time and effort into making the lives of our students across Missouri better. Teachers are fortunate to have people like you advocating for them, and together, we can be that champion that every kid deserves.
MSBA's delegate assembly met during the annual conference. The fall delegate assembly votes on the association's legislative resolutions that will form the basis of MSBA's advocacy efforts during the 2016 session of the General Assembly. Something new at the annual conference this year was a special membership reception held in the exhibit hall, where our board members and administrators could gather with colleagues from their region of the state for informal conversations about issues facing schools in their areas. This event takes the place of the MSBA Fall Regional Meetings that have been held in the weeks immediately following the annual conference in recent years. Missouri voters will have the chance to expand early childhood education programs throughout the state by supporting Amendment Three that will appear on the November 8 ballot. The measure would gradually raise Missouri's lowest-in-the-nation cigarette tax by 60 cents a pack and generate about $300 million a year for early childhood education and health programs. Garrett Webb, with the Amendment Three campaign, says Missouri lacks behind other states in its support of early childhood education.
Missouri, as I think you're well aware, ranks almost at the bottom in terms of how many of our four-year-olds have access to early childhood. In fact, only 3% have access to state-funded early childhood. When you compare that to the states around us and the national average, that's far below where we need to be to create a competitive workforce and to really serve our families' well.
The benefits of early childhood education have been well documented in numerous studies. MSBA strongly supports Amendment Three on the November ballot. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board.
Next on the agenda is update on the MASA, MSBA conference that Mr. Dan was talking about. And before I ask for any comments, the way I look at that conference, that conference is my conference, and we all, as board members and superintendents, should feel like that's my conference. But then, when we have three principals, a counselor, and a student board member show up on their Saturday, their day off, and an assistant superintendent, and a secretary, that says something to me, it really speaks. And if you all saw the Douglas County Herald last week, you will see that it honored our program that we have with our student board member. And so, I would like to ask Logan if he has anything to say.
Well, we did teach a breakout session on student governance and the system that we have in place here at Ava with a student board representative, and it went very well. It went better than I ever could have hoped that it would have. I just talked about, you know, my job description as acting as the link between the Board of Education and the students. You know, I relay information to them, just what happens in these meetings, and sort of give them the rundown of important issues that are going on, try to keep them informed to the best of my ability. And everybody had very great questions. The crowd was very responsive. They asked me a lot of really hard, not really hard-hitting, but questions that really tested our knowledge, you know, as far as it goes. And it was great. The UNA session was probably the best portion of it, in my opinion, just because of the crowd that we had and the questions that they asked. And all in all, it was a great experience. Got to meet a lot of really influential people.
And there was a gentleman there. Did you catch where he was from, Logan?
I didn't catch where he was from. I believe his last name was White, I want to say.
I think it's White.
Yeah, Brandon.
He's going to vote for Logan when he runs for Congress and possibly governor or president. But he did say that, and then he turned around and gave Logan a book, a huge book. Tell us about that.
He gave me this book called Leaders Eat Last, and it was about just all of these stories relating to things, the military and, you know, being a leader. And sort of how all those things relate together, and he tied in a lot of stuff about, you know, economics and sort of those things. And the thing that really struck me with this book is that he had bought two copies, one for him and one for his son, who he said was going into politics, I believe studying constitutional law. And he gave me his copy because he thought that the presentation was so influential to him that he wanted me to have that copy and read it. And that was amazing. And when I got a second after shaking his hand and having a nice conversation with him, it was a signed copy from the author. And that, it just blew my mind.
It was awesome. And you did an excellent job. If I hadn't mentioned that before, you sure did. Hey, anybody else want to comment on the conference?
I definitely did. This is my second year of going to these, and hands down, the three sessions that Ava represented was the very best. I know I'm partial, I don't know. But I know Judge Carter did an awesome job, and I was almost in tears when Katie Burdall did her presentation because it's so moving, one of the care to learn, and how we're impacting children. I was really impressed.
Very good. Anyone else?
I had a long page to read, but I think this all covered it pretty much. And I was completely proud of Ava High School, Ava School. And Katie, Judge Carter, did a good job, wonderful job. And I had another person after Logan's presentation and Randy's say that he would vote for president for Logan too, and Randy could run also, he'd take Randy too, so.
I'll be his vice president.
And that was a different person, and I was proud, I really was.
I think it was probably one of the best conferences that I had went to in several years, and I've been there for four or five of them now.
The thing that I always was upset about is they would take Ava and stick us way down the hill somewhere where nobody could find us, we're in a tiny, tiny room, and we got, I thought, pretty good rooms for our presentations. Judge Carter had a problem because his was at the end of the day, and everybody was, he had to keep us awake, and he did a good job. Nobody fell asleep. But it was excellent. I didn't get to attend much the first day because I had to be in Jefferson City to attend an induction into the bar, and that took me away for a little bit. But I got there in time for the delegate assembly, Marcia and I attended that. We had some hot topics. You want to talk about that?
I don't remember what they were.
Well, it was actually presented by a district. Normally, the way it is, the MSB Board of Directors, which I serve on for our region, will come up with a topic that needs to be changed or updated or whatever, or to send our lobbyist out to lobby the legislators. And this came in from one of the school districts, and it was a valid point. It was on early childhood education, it had several different avenues. And then, when they got done hashing it out, it was voted down a pretty good margin, but it was quite a debate. It went on and on.
The only thing I remembered was the three test questions.
Yeah, we voted for president for one of the test questions. That was quite interesting, too. Anybody else have anything to say about conference?
Yeah, I'll say something real quick. Ditto to everybody. I agree that Ava presentations were the best stuff there that I saw. Very proud of everyone that participated, they just did a great job. One thing I focused on, picking the classes I picked, was electronics and technology, a lot of classes on the One-to-One Program, which is a program for schools for every child kindergarten, pre-K, through senior, having their own electronic device provided by the school. And very exciting, wonderful classes on that. And I was very excited to learn that Mr. Dial started the program, One-to-One Initiative at Baller. So, pretty look forward to visiting with them in the future, about some possibilities for Ava as well, so.
Great. All right, nobody else? Logan, do you?
I was going on healthcare. There's a group of schools that have pooled together, their premiums go into a pool, and out of that pool, the claims are paid, and they think it's a very good deal. I think this is starting the third year on it. The first year, they had like a percent and a half, I believe, increase in their premium. After the second year, there was no increase, and they had like a $15 million surplus in there, and they're looking to invest this surplus, and maybe at some point, it will lower the premiums. And I think it's probably something that before we do next year's healthcare, we probably ought to get in touch with them. They'll come down and talk to us and show us the program, and I think it's something we need to look at. It might save us some money.
Was it Matt? Do you remember the name of the program? I'm very familiar with stuff on the trust.
I think it is. Yep.
I got it. Okay, I know them. Very great. It's good. There's two or three in Southwest Missouri that are very good.
I think there was 80 schools.
Yeah, there are 80 schools in Matt. They've combined several consortiums.
The Callenger Company that, or not Callenger, yeah, Calliger, they are the administrators of the program, which they're the administrators of our liability and property interest. Now, the music, I think it's named music, and they administrate this program here, and they were very high. They said, it's run by superintendents.
It is.
The guys that made the talk said that they were looking at premium increases in 10%, 12%, 15% every year, and it was to get a percent and a half one year and zero percent increase the next year. They were really high.
I'm just coming out, just for your information, I'm just coming out of a relation, July 1st, I ended my second year as the president of an OSBA self-funded trust. That experienced much the same experience, so I'm very familiar with Matt. You have several districts around here that are involved in that, so I'm very comfortable.
I think it's something we probably ought to look at, you know, before we talk about that here.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comments, the Ava Board Spotlight. The community spotlight is Judge Craig Carter, truancy court. Who's?
Mr. Hall.
No. Dr. Hall.
Dr. Hall.
So, we're going to recognize Judge Craig Carter tonight. We're going to recognize the truancy court. Truancy Court serves three counties, Wright, Douglas, and Ozark. It began in March 2nd, 2015. In that time, it served 148 students. Just from personal experience in sending kids, you'll send somebody who's got 70% or 80% attendance, and afterwards, it's perfect attendance or maybe a day. It's a huge impact on kids, many kids at school for them to be able to learn, and we appreciate this partnership in education. He also presented the MSBA conference on Saturday, October 1st, so we appreciate you taking time out of your weekend for that as well. So, Judge Craig Carter.
Under the bear. Or in front of the bear.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us at the conference.
All right, guys, thanks.
Next is the district spotlight, which is for Devon Darlington and Wes Thomas, school video and principals. Mrs. Nash?
Devon and Wes. This is Wes Thomas and Devon Darlington, and they created the video that you watched before the board meeting. That video was submitted for the MSBA video contest. They also assisted Ms. Burdall for her presentation on parent learning, created a video for that as well. So, they put in a lot of hard work for that, and we appreciate everything you guys have done, and great job.
Wes, great. Devon.
Thank you.
If the principals will come up here for just a second. It is Principal Appreciation Week, and so, we're going to recognize our principals. We're going to wait for them to come on up so we can drag them here a little bit. Mr. Hall, continue.
He's at a coaching booth.
So, we could spend a lot of time going through some things that they do, but I just wanted to highlight, we're proud to have these three, David, Mr. Howt, two, and four is assistant at the high school. Just briefly, at the high school, one of the things I really appreciate and admire about Mrs. Nash is she does a really good job of bringing her team in. They're never complacent, they're never satisfied with what's going on, and she always wants things to get better for her kids. In an ever-changing world in education, that's something that is critical for success, so we're really proud to have Mrs. Nash here. Mrs. Swaddish, one of the things that I think her students and her staff will say is she has a heart for kids. It's not uncommon at all to walk through and watch her finding ways to pull kids up that are struggling. We've got lots of students with lots of needs, and she makes that a top priority for her every day in her building to make sure kids are loved. Mr., no, it's Dr. Hall.
As of Tuesday night.
As of Tuesday night, and so, we are super proud of Dr. Hall. Clint's got a servant's heart. If there's a question about that, in January, come through and see where he is. Go through parent drop-off because he'll be standing out by the cafeteria no matter what the weather is and greeting every student that walks in, and there's many things good that go on in our buildings, but we're proud of all of you and thank you very much.
Here's something that'll make you have worked with all three of these administrators at one time or the other, but obviously, Mrs. Swaddish was an assistant principal when I was the principal here. We worked well together. Mrs. Nash followed her as an assistant principal, and this would make you feel, Dr. Hall, is a student of mine.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Was I a spin into yours?
You were not. Your son was.
Oh. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the principal and director reports. Did I miss something? I did. Oh, we do have a public comment. Wayne, where are you at, Wayne? I didn't even see you here. There you are, you're hiding back there.
Thank you very much for giving the opportunity to see you guys tonight. It's been a month since our school board placed our school superintendent on paid administrative leave. According to members of the media here tonight, no reasons for that action have been released for publication or for broadcast. I have some experience with school boards, and I understand that the superintendent of a district acts in concert with and under the direct supervision of a board of education. If a super strays from the constraints that are placed on them, they're not placed on paid administrative leave, they're suspended without pay or fired for cause, cause that must be demonstrable in a court of law where actions like this almost invariably are contested. That is, when actions such as this are not settled out of court, where full contracted salaries are paid and professional damages are compensated. And who pays those court costs, those attorney fees, those full contracted salaries, those professional damages, and now, the salary of an interim superintendent? I do, and all the other Douglas County taxpayers right along with me. I've been reading a long time, and I've developed some facility with the skill, but I was unable to decipher the press release issued by the board as to why this action was taken. It seemed to me to be intentionally evasive, described by a friend of mine as jamumbo jumbo or gobbledygook. I've met with the super on several occasions regarding educational issues, and I've always found her to be competent, forthcoming, and personable, a fine superintendent. I was a professional for quite a while, and I know how important a reputation is to a professional. If any organization to which I had contracted my professional services had done to me what it appears has been done to the super, without serious violations of contract or serious violations of law, they would have found themselves in a courtroom in a heartbeat. So, I'm wondering, if the super's deportment was so deplorable that she should have had her career dealt such a detrimental blow and suffered such personal and professional embarrassment, why was the school board's vote to do so barely a majority and not unanimous? Indeed, I've been given understanding, although I may be wrong about this, but had the absent member of the board voted, he would have cast his vote with the minority, making the decision of the board that much more difficult to understand. When does a school board intend to explain the reasons we have a superintendent on paid administrative leave, and an assistant superintendent who is doing her job as well as doing his job, an interim superintendent for the rest of the school term, and a great deal of confusion throughout the district? Not to mention what all this is going to eventually cost us. As a Douglas County taxpayer, I for one would certainly like to hear those reasons. Would any of you care to tell us at this public meeting tonight why the school board did what you did?
Well, Wayne, at this point, we can't answer that. It's kind of like when we've had other legal issues, we have to wait until the final, and then everything will be disclosed.
Thank you very much. I just have a little handout.
So, that's the answer? I know you're familiar. Put it off until?
We can.
Until legally you can give a good reason.
We can.
So, you're not going to, you're just going to keep putting it off, right?
There will be a time. Okay? And there will be a disclosure. Okay, next item on the agenda is the principal and director reports. Elementary principal, Dr. Hall.
So, today, we went to Gunner Farms in Holloway, Missouri, kindergarten kids.
So today we went to Gunner Farms in Holloway, Missouri, kindergarten kids up there for pumpkin patch trip. We had a great time. They had an indoor facility, had a big tub of feed, and they loved it. They jumped in it and bounced in roughhouse. They had a ladder over some hay, and they had a square bale hay maze for them to do, and then took them out in the cornfield, let them through there. Everybody got to take home the pumpkin. It was just a great day.
Thank you. Middle school principal, Mrs. Swaddish.
Next week is red ribbon week, which is our drug-free week, and our different clubs have planned and formatted for each day's a dress-up day. That's really crucial when you're in middle school. We want all of our kids to feel like they're connected, and dress-up days is one of the favorite days for all of them. And I want to thank all of our teachers, student council, our trend, our PBIS, which is our positive behavior support committee, for spending lots of time on planning. We have several assemblies, we have some positive reward things that are going to go on, and then Fellowship of Christian Athletes is providing a guest speaker on Wednesday for the district. So we're just excited about next week. It's going to be awesome.
High school principal, Mrs. Nash.
We just finished this first quarter. We started our draft program this year, which is developing relationships and focused teaching, which is our intervention program, and it's going very well. Teachers are recruiting students to come to their classrooms, the ones that they can make a difference with, or the ones that they feel like need the extra attention for that specific subject. So doing a great job there, getting ready to have our second draft next week, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Mrs. Nash, I witnessed one of the teachers have had a conversation with her student today, and it was making a difference in this.
Special services director, Mrs. Swappert.
We sent three staff members last week to a two-day range of recent training to learn behavior strategies for struggling students in the classroom, and they came back with some great ideas, and they're looking forward to sharing it with their buildings.
Okay, maintenance director, Mr. Maltyne.
Last two weeks, been really busy with maintenance and custodian staff. I'd like to thank the custodian staff here from now to that this week. Got some plans going, and I have a couple of problems.
Thank you. School nurses, Mrs. Stafford and Ms. Brick aren't with us tonight. Food services director, Mrs. Aborn.
Yes, it's good to be back with you after being gone for a couple of months. This past Tuesday, about 12 of us visited part of schools. We are currently trying to get in process breakfast in the classroom, and we've got another school we want to visit. We're excited about this, and if we can get the program up and going, we're hoping we're shooting for December, so we're pretty excited about it. So if you have any questions, let us know.
Thank you. And 21st Century, Mrs. Prenderby is with us tonight.
Yes, I do. Her report is in front of you or being sent to you. A visit with Mrs. Prenderby this week, as you know, the 21st Century grant was not renewed, which several school districts that had previously had it did not get renewed. But our numbers are really good. She was kind of hoping for 65 kids, somewhere in there. She's seen about 85 kids a day right now, I think she told me. So she's excited about the sustainability of the program, so it's exciting.
Thank you. And then the executive administrative reports, Dr. Dial.
Okay, so we have our final numbers in September about where our enrollment is, and I know the district has been on a little bit of a decline since 2014, so I just ran some numbers. From '14 to '15, we saw a 2.8% reduction, and then it really slowed down, '15 to '16 to about half a percent. And we are actually up to this year 12 students, so that is great. We saw a significant increase in kindergarten, even over our screening numbers. We had 75 kindergartners last year, we have 87 kindergartners this year, which is cramping the kindergarten classrooms a little bit, but those teachers are handling that well, so that is a wonderful problem to have. As we go, we will continue to look at enrollment, look at enrollment trends, and if we need to make some changes in the spring, we'll make some changes for next year in the spring. Our pre-K numbers are down a little bit, but not too bad. But over four years, we've seen a 3% decrease in enrollment. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, but it's good that we're up this year, so that's exciting. The next thing that I have for you is I would like to personally thank, just this week with Mr. Henry, just I know he's had a tough task over the last month, and I think he's handled it like a pro, but just what he's done for me in one week, just bringing me on board, helping to educate me about what's going on in the district, but encouraging me to say, hey, just don't listen to me, listen to lots of people. So had lots of conversations with lots of people in the district, whether they be administrators or teachers, just to get what's great and what do we need to work on. And let me tell you, the list of what's great is much longer than the list of what we need to work on. So that encourages me. I think we can make some positive impact very quickly. I'm excited to be here. We have lots of work to do, but it wouldn't matter if we had had no issues whatsoever, we'd still have lots of work to do because that's what education's about. You're always trying to improve, you're always trying to be better. There are great people here and great staff. Been asked that question about, why'd you pick here? Well, because this feels like coming to me, that's why I'm here, so.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Henry.
A couple of things that I just wanted to touch on a little bit. We had talked some about the professional development day that was coming up right before our last board meeting. I think Mrs. Gilmore has left, but she had done a lot there to help us.
She is.
Is she back there?
She is.
So I just wanted to thank her too, because she had done a lot to get that going, and we have had a lot of very positive feedback about what that day looked like. Coach Leonard, her Healthy Schools Grant, we talk about that a lot, but she continues to get absolutely every bit of value out of that, continues to make action plans and have meetings and make sure that our students are getting the benefit from that. I know she's looking at several grants too that will help continue that. One of the things that I just wanted to touch on was some of our MAP data. Our MAP data is back in, and as we look at that, I've been talking over the last two years about one of the things that's difficult right now in education is we don't know what standards are going to be, we don't know what the assessment's going to look like, but we still are going to gather that up, and we're still going to figure out what we do well and what we need to improve on. So what you have there is a comparison of our MAP and EOC scores in our district over the past three years, or I'm sorry, this year, last year, and the state average, so that you've got something to look at. And then you've also got this year's comparison in our conference tools. Right now, what we're doing with principals is we're sitting down and looking at those to figure out what are some strengths we have, what are some weaknesses we have, and how do we need to make improvements, and how do we need to share with other schools what we're doing well? Had a couple of schools contact us about some things that we are doing well, and this is a stressful thing for teachers, I know. As those kids come in there, one of the things that we've talked about is we talk about evaluations of teachers is we want to see growth. So it's not always necessarily a number that we're looking for, it's looking for that growth. So anyway, the principals and I and teachers will be sitting down and going through some of these things, but I just wanted to provide you a little bit of data of some of the things that we're looking at.
I'll tag on the backside of that, Mr. Henry, and this is embargoed until November 7th, but it is our preliminary APR, and it is very good. We're very excited about that. We can't talk about that publicly at this point because it is embargoed, but wanted you to have it. We are excited about what it looks like, so it's great. The last thing is HVAC. We need to give you an update. We've talked about elementary gym, HVAC, what we need to replace it or repair it. I'd like to run a few of those figures.
Just wanted to touch base with you on our, you know, we're on the back end of this district-wide HVAC improvement, but one of the ones that we had looked at was on the elementary gym and the elementary music room. Those units are pretty old, so right now in one of those large units on the gym, one compressor's up, so it's not cooling like it needs to. They're old enough that you start looking at, is it time to repair or replace? Visited with Monty a little bit on that. Right now, we can get the parts, so we're going to really watch how long that fix lasts, but we do have bids on what a new system would cost too. So I just wanted to keep everybody up to date with what was happening there. I know sometimes when you're looking at some of these large fixes on older equipment, you start trying to figure out when is that line between just pouring money in repairs. So we're going to kind of put a date stamp on that and be watching that, but right now we're going to go ahead and order that compressor while it's an option for us.
It's fairly inexpensive for a thing.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion and action items, the facility and grounds program review.
As we go through this, I feel like the facilities and grounds is something that we're looking at all the time, and Monty and the maintenance staff or custodians do a really good job of keeping up with older buildings. But we just went through and talked with the principals, of course, they're in that, and they hear from all of their staff and parents some too. The elementary building is very old. Actually, all of the main buildings this year have had some plumbing issues of some sort, but the elementary has also got some electrical things. But one of the things that, in talking with Monty and Mr. Hall, those exterior doors, of course, we have the magnetic video system that would have to change, but that's one of the things that he would really like. It's catching, it's hard to get open sometimes, and that's something that he would like. At the middle school, the number one concern and has been for a while is that gym entrance. You can talk to Monty or any of our maintenance or custodians, on that north side, if we have the right winner or the wrong winner, that ice is there for a long, long time. And so what's happened is they put salt on that to try to bust it up because they can't break it any other way. It's pitted that concrete really bad. So this year, they've gone through and they've done some patchwork, but we actually have a bid. We took bids on that last year, and we have a bid that was guaranteed through next year. We didn't want to be doing all that wet concrete work, not that a student or a teacher would accidentally step in wet concrete, but we didn't want to take that chance, so we wanted to do that when there weren't students here, so we do have that. At the high school, right now, we're, as we've dialed back and tightened the belts a little bit, the regular daytime custodian, we had a plan and it didn't work out as well, but I know there's been some times where Miss Nash has been out cleaning some throw-ups and different things, but that would be something that would be nice and just a project, and I know this was on Monty's radar already, is just to go ahead and refinish the high school leachures on the permanent side, something that they're looking at there. The things that we've talked about, you know, we talked about technology infrastructure, and we've gotten that checked off the list, and it's not perfect yet, but it's getting better. We've talked about the phone system for a number of years, and that's coming, we're going to talk about that in a minute. So there's definitely some improvements. Of course, we'd still like to see some more cameras in different places, but we have an old campus, but we've got people that are taking care of things and doing a good job to keep things up.
Okay. Thank you. We need a motion to approve the facilities and grounds program review. Motion by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Treadway. All in favor? Carried 7-0. Next item is early childhood program review. Dr. Hall.
Sarah Key and Connie Dean are preschool teachers here tonight. We'll start with the program review part first. With all of our programs, including, we sent Carol Owens out for special services with Head Start, we serve 92 children. Some partnerships we have, Parents as Teachers and Head Start have partnered this year for screenings. Parents as Teachers has also partnered with neighboring Parents as Teachers for an advisory panel and to go over best practices. Our preschool collaborates with the Health Department and the University of Missouri Extension Office. Some other community programs, of course, there's a Head Start in our community, and Mountain Zion provides a private preschool option. We have not done a district needs assessment because we've not looked to expand our early childhood services since we had Miss Dean's preschool. We do have a plan to support transition into kindergarten. Some things we do for kindergarten transition, we have enrollment in the spring, we give out paperwork at that time. We have summer school for kids who'll be going into kindergarten, they can come during the month of June, meet kindergarten teachers, spend the day with them. This year, we added something new, we had kindergarten kickoff before open house, it's kind of like a kindergarten open house, and they met their teachers and they rotate around all the different house classes. Head Start comes and tours our campus, and of course, our preschool students have the option of going to Bears Den of an evening, so that also gets them familiar with teachers and gets them familiar with the building. We do share records. Parents as Teachers, and this is something we've talked about every year, we have one part-time person, so 29% of eligible families compared to the census are served, but it's something that we always do well on. The children that we serve, 75% are high needs, and the state average on that is 48%. So we do very well at serving high needs students. We'll go to the next part, the strengths and concerns. So this is the part where we surveyed parents, we surveyed our teachers as well as about 15 different parents. Some strengths they noted, communication between teachers and parents, whether that's conversations, newsletters, text messages, being able to offer services such as speech to our students at an early age before they get to kindergarten, of course, meals being provided, kids get to try new things, such as different foods in the cafeteria. They have monthly parent involvement activities. Something that they mentioned was tuition's been dropped this year, and our parents have definitely appreciated that. That's been a good change for our full-day parents. Full day is going to go through the accreditation process this year. Something parents noted, we have knowledgeable staff, their children are exposed to structure before they actually enter school, which makes kindergarten that much easier. As far as parents as teachers, I have multiple parents say they enjoy the developmental handouts, it gives them a way to gauge where their child's at and where they're going, and some things they can do to work with their child. Overwhelmingly, I always hear, hey, my child loves Miss Sarah, or they love Miss Debbie, or they love Miss Connie. Kids love their teachers, and these ladies are the face of our program, and very often early childhood is the first taste for a family of the Abel School District. It's important for it to be a positive one. So I know if there's this concern, I always change this, because if I say, hey, what concerns do you have, parents will tell me none. But if I say, hey, what ways can we get better, I'll get a better answer. So ways that we could get better, parking for parents at the full day, that's something that's talked about. I know there's been some middle school traffic flow things going on this year. Age of our playground equipment, I know Miss Debbie's playground equipment was donated by a parent years ago, and some of that's starting to show. We had some, one lady said, we would love more full-day slots, you know, so even more kids could be served. And then something else we could do, and we did it this week, is put some more of our preschool kids on the school Facebook page, because parents do enjoy seeing their children on there. Do you all have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. So we need a motion to accept the early childhood program review by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Strong. All in favor? Carried 7-0. Next on the agenda is special education program review.
I'll get some of the highlights of our program. We looked at our program review, we evaluated data from the 15, 16...
When we looked at our program review, we evaluated data from the 15, 16 school year. In early childhood, we had 25 students during that time. At the end of the year, when they exited the early childhood, we had 100% of the students that were, had improved, increased their progress in social emotional skills, acquiring and use of knowledge in appropriate actions to meet needs. So I think that's good whenever you see such a large number for our early childhood special education students. During that time in school age, we had 181 students. This year, we are currently sitting around 200 students, so our numbers are up. We had in, when we compared our special education, our MAP scores for 15, 16 and elementary, we had in third and fourth grade, four proficient or advanced out of 28 students and four in math. And middle school, fifth through eighth grade, we had 12 advanced or proficient and eight advanced or proficient in math. In high school, we had six in English and six in math. We did look at our graduating, and we had 15 in our graduating cohort that year, all 15 graduated, and we had no dropouts out of our program, so that's very, very good, very strong. We had, when we compared our students from the year before, we had 11 that graduated. All 11 were either attending a post-secondary school, vocational school, or gainfully employed when we followed up.
How did you obtain that information?
From the graduating seniors, call on the phone.
Okay, I just wondered.
Sure, sure, just make contact with, with them and their parents to see what they're doing after graduation. So at that time. We did have, during the last year, we had to submit some, our file review, we had five corrective action plans. That was down from 10 the previous cycle, which is every three years we have to send in files, so that's a great improvement. I was very proud of that. Shows how hard our staff all work together to make sure everything's in line with what GESI requires. The last thing I'll hit on is, I mentioned that we do have around 200 students in our program right now, that is early childhood, speech. Specific numbers, elementary's sitting at around 39 students, middle school 51, high school 49. Speech and language, that's 80 district-wide, and 33 of those that receive speech also are qualified under another eligibility category, early childhood 16. Some strengths that we have, all of our staff works really hard and diligently meeting the various needs of our students, and I'm very proud of that, and that shows in some of these numbers. Areas of concern that we need improvement, technology, maybe some, you know, iPads, some sensory, we're seeing lots of kids with sensory issues, and so that would be a good, a good improvement that we could use. And recommendations, a high need, low functioning classroom in the elementary would be a need that I see this time end, an autism or behavior classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion to accept the special education program review by Mrs. Aborn, seconded by Mr. Strong. All in favor? Carried 7-0. Next item is at Ava Elementary School, gym and music, HVAC.
Kind of gave you an update on that. The cost of those parts are going to be about $2,400 on the repair. Yeah, I feel like that's a, it's a legitimate cost. It's much, much more expensive to replace those units. We're going to try to shroud, replace that compressor. Just, no, we do not.
All right. The next item is the phone system update.
Okay, week after the last board meeting, after you guys approved it, we went heading for the BO in, you know, some contractors, and they started shipping stuff, so I think last week, we got a pile of load of phones in, about the middle of the week, and this weekend actually started configuring them. We still have about three devices left to come in, at which time, when the last device comes in, I'll let them know, and then they'll show up and install the head end part, and all the phones should be configured to where it's just going to be, go to the administration, get them all up, and then just walk class to class and plug phones in. So hopefully, by the next board meeting, great views, and we'll be done, and everybody will be smiling about phones for again.
So, you know, we are getting some insurance money from our lightning strike on our, because we did have several phones getting struck by lightning, so we'll be receiving money back from our insurance company, as well as, we have several other things that were struck by lightning, greenhouse and some other issues, but we are going to get some of that money that was allocated last month back. I'm not sure exactly that amount, but we were looking at $3,500, $4,000 last time I knew.
Great. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. All right, next is the remaining bus routes purchased. Who's thinking of that?
Either one of us can. We have received a proposal from McDonald Radio LLC, DBA MR Ranch, to purchase the remaining bus routes, number 3, 12, and 13.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the proposal or discussion, or what do you want to, however you want to deal with it?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Treadway to accept the proposal to purchase the remaining three bus routes. Second by Mr. Strong. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five opposed?
Two.
Motion carried five to two. Great, we're at the end of our agenda. The next regular board meeting will be November 17th at 6:30 in this room. Do I have a motion to adjourn and return back into closed session? By Mr. Strong, seconded by Mr. Treadway. All in favor? Carried 7-0. Thank you all for attending our October open session of our board.